For December thirteenth, four oh eight, with the school committee there. I guess we're going to discuss joining up our town meeting and your school meeting. So, where do we want to start here, guys?
Well, I think personally, I'd like to hear from the school, school board and administration about your thinking about what your interest is or why you think it's preferable to do a night meeting as opposed to a Saturday, which is what we would like to see happen where the school warrants and, and the town warrants are handled in a single town meeting. But we understand you prefer a nighttime meeting.
No, I don't prefer anything except a Saturday.
Hmm?
A full Saturday. People in the town can devote one Saturday to the town's business.
Okay.
I feel. Because I was very upset it was separated from the beginning. So that's my personal feeling.
Well, I think the reason we, I was trying to say the reason we're here is when we proposed that, I think we heard from the school board that they would prefer to have their town meeting on a weeknight.
Throw a buzz off.
And so, so we wanted to understand that thinking and try to get us to a position where we can come on the same page.
I think, that was, that was me really, and I think it was because before COVID, that was what we always did. We did it on a Tuesday night. We started at like six o'clock and we were all done before seven thirty. And the parents really liked that because their Saturdays, their kids are in sports and they're in this, that and the other. And some of them, that's the only day that they have with their kids. And so, what we did on those Tuesday nights was we had babysitters in the library and it worked, it worked really well. So my idea was if, if it ain't broke, why try to fix it and do something different? And the other, the other thing that concerned me was that back many years ago, when we used to do them all together, there were not as many articles that, that the state now requires us to do articles in a certain, you know, certain manner and numbers and all that kind of stuff. There weren't as many articles back then as there are now. So my concern is about doing all the school articles, which will probably be like twenty or so, somewheres around there. And then after that, going and doing all the town ones, which I, I went to the town, town meeting last year and I think we were there until like two o'clock. It was a long, it was a long meeting. We had, I know they took a lunch break, so you've got, got to kind of cut that in there, but.
If it helps at all, Judy, on that note, with our new accounting firm, Mark Roy actually just had a conversation today and I apologize to the board, they don't know all of this yet, but he's sent us some samples over from surrounding towns that he does and how he's looking to consolidate and the recommendation we're going to make to the select board tonight actually consolidates the town almost in half. So that's what you guys will see tonight, but.
It'd be pretty cool.
That would be nice.
And when they're looking at like all roads on one, I mean all district, one-on-one article, he's really, I mean, if it helps, he's looking to cut them out drastically. But it doesn't affect the school articles.
But I mean, and that's good. That, that will be really helpful. But the one thing you can't really cut back on is questions at the mic that go on and on.
We've had town meetings where we've cut out my noon time, that's why they stopped doing lunch. Remember when Hannah did the food?
Yes, yes.
Hannah's pig.
All that food, yeah, even had the pig.
I remember the pig.
But that was when we didn't combine with the school.
No, but, but when we were doing it, it was getting done at eleven o'clock.
Town and school.
And that's when everything was going smoothly, I guess. We were just going yay, you know, and rolling out the door, but they stopped doing lunches. And then last year, of course, you know, every year is different because you got, you know, different, different things bring up different people, I guess, and different questions. But we, we were discussing the, I think it was a Thursday night, a Tuesday night?
Thursday.
Thursday night, yeah. And the issue we were having with doing, doing that night was with your twenty articles and even, even with our thirty, you know, to have, you know, say you're, you figure about seven o'clock, well, you add our thirty on top of that, we'd be out there at nine thirty, ten o'clock, you know?
If we're lucky.
If we're lucky.
So I, I wasn't thinking of combining the two at night. I was thinking of doing them separate, like we've been doing for years and having the school one at night and having the town one on a Saturday as it has been. That's, that's what we've done for the past few years until we got to COVID where we did a written one for a while.
Well, we also didn't have selectmen that would change from the June meeting. That was a problem. June, everybody was gone, so we didn't want to combine because we didn't want to go to June. And we didn't want to go to June because then we can't hire people. So that's why we're back to April. Beginning of May, the latest, is so we can hire people that are good people looking for jobs instead of waiting until July thirty first or something.
The board has agreed to move it to April, right?
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, I don't know if you, do you guys watch us up here on Wednesday nights?
No, I do. I either watch you or I'll watch the video, one or the other.
So, you know, it's taken a lot for me. I've been this guy, like June's great, you know, I like June. Oh, Father's Day problem, let's move it the week before, you know, we got rid of that problem. But I think, you know, I don't want to speak for the whole board, but, you know, I was fine with June, but what the board, I think, is trying to do here is we're trying to get more people, more participation. And of course, you know, we, we get on the other end of it, unfortunately, because we have the people going, hey, that's, you know, that's a huge part of our budget and they're different and doing this and that.
Want to be out at night on a.
Yeah, and of course, they don't want it at night either. And so, you know, what we're trying to do is trying to find a compromise here. Problem is, we just can't do that compromise during the week. So that, I guess we're not compromising.
During the week, no.
During the week, with, with the amount of articles that we have makes it almost impossible to do it. And I don't think anybody wants their kids out until ten o'clock at night either, you know, but, so, you know, pretty much at this point, I guess what we're just trying to do is just trying to get more participation. I honestly, my opinion, probably ain't going to happen. You're going to get the same people one way or another?
That's right.
But, but you're going to have your people and then we're going to have our people, so maybe we might get a few more, you know, we'll see.
The last town meeting they had, about a hundred people showed up. By the time everybody was done, I counted twenty-five people were left in that hall.
Yeah, I remember that.
They go there for just what they want.
I remember that meeting.
But we used to, used to have it in March. Then everybody complained. People are in Florida. How do you please everybody?
I voted for the ballot, right?
Yeah.
And then when it got voted in seven hundred something, I figured we were going to have to change venues because seven hundred people was up to our meeting. They didn't. But, but no, we're, we're just trying to work something here that, you know, and if it doesn't work, if it doesn't work out, then, you know, maybe we do something different. But I, I think if we can, we can come to some sort of compromise on the date, you know, on a Saturday.
Sounds like we're all in agreement. April is a good timeframe.
Right.
Sometime, we can pick the week, the weekend, but April works for the school. We think we're going to be ready at a town level to do April, so let's kind of check one that we think we agree on.
As long as we stay away from vacation.
As long as we stay, yeah. I think that's something we can, I'm sure we can work around.
Yeah.
So April is a good timeframe for both of us. Personally, I believe that it's important for all the residents to be able to come in one setting and to be able to review all of the, in particular, budgets and other important warrants and to have as many people as there. I understand you have a, a group that you typ, that typically go to the school meetings and they may, I don't know if they're the same, that may be different than what we have at the town meeting. I, I don't know.
It's a lot of the same. I think we probably have more parents with kids that come to the school budget meeting, but the, there are a lot of townspeople that, that come too.
But I think it's important to just have one town meeting.
Can I talk to that, Judy?
Sure.
This is CJ, one of the school.
Hi, it's CJ Gardner. Sorry, I have COVID, so I can't like be around people right now. But the reason why we have more, obviously, parents come to the school to make, to the school budget vote because it directly impacts their children. It's also a lot less that they have to do. They show up for like a half an hour on a Tuesday night after dinner before the kids go to bed. That's it. And then they can get back home and get their kids to bed. It's a lot more to invest in a five-hour Saturday when you have kids who are bored after a half an hour, like, you know, and if, so my kids are nine and six. And if we want to go to this, my husband or I have to stay home with them. So it was fantastic last year to have the babysitting, but even with babysitting, like, some people, not everybody know, knew Bridgette, so I'm sure not everybody felt comfortable leaving their kids with some random lady. I did because Bridgette's great and I love her. But, you know, it's, it's really hard for parents of young children to give up five, four, five, six hours on a Saturday morning.
I, I'm not sure that.
That is why there has not historically been a lot of parents who go to town meeting.
I, 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 I think there's a possibility. We've got to talk to the select board about this as well. I don't know why we don't just do the school warrants first.
Well, that's what.
And, and so if people just are interested in the school budget, let's put that right up front. And if they, so rather than a five or six-hour meeting for them, it may be a one-hour meeting and hopefully that creates, or that eliminates that issue. I don't really care what hour they go. I would love to see all the money issues right up front because I think that's what brings a lot of people out. But I'm not sure the other articles necessarily do. A lot of those are like.
Housekeeping.
Just a, that's right, they're housekeeping and zoning is sort of what's left. And so, let's get all the money issues right up front. Let's do the school first. And if people, if that's all they want to vote on, they can leave. And, you know, so hopefully they're out the door.
You know, definitely. We've talked about, I think, that before. And, you know, and I understand what CJ, right, CJ, yeah. What, what she's talking about at the same time, in our position, okay, we have to look at everybody in town.
Yeah.
So, you know, you know, we, we do, we do appreciate, you know, the parents. And that's why last year we had the daycare and stuff because we were trying to get more of that there. But we, we can't forget about the older people and stuff like that, that, you know, they want to, they want, they want to know about everything, I guess.
School budget, town budget. It's all important because it all comes out of taxes.
You know, if we do this and we put your articles first, okay, it could be like, you remember COVID?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay, COVID drive, we had that one article, they stayed until that article, then the place emptied out.
I know.
And it was like ten people. I'm exaggerating, but it was like, the place cleared right out. We're like, well, there goes town meeting over that one article. It may happen with you guys, who knows, but at least we make the attempt, you know?
You can even take a little break in between.
Well, historically, I pulled the numbers from seventeen to twenty-three and whether it was open or polls, we've had about the same amount of people participate in town meeting versus the, the school. You know, we didn't take the time to compare names to see if it was the same people attending them, but really they're within ten, you know, ten or so, other than when we had the petition for the salt, that drew a different crowd because that was on your, your ballot.
Yeah, I remember that.
Judy, you also mentioned that the question and answers can go on extensively. I haven't seen that in the last couple of meetings, but, you know, it was, it was there, but it may not have been as bad as what you might have been referring to. But I'd suggest we spend time understanding what the possibilities are for a moderator to manage that. I assume there are things they can do to manage it. And maybe we ought to, if there are some prospective moderators that might be interested, why don't we spend some time talking with them and see, and let them know about this issue? People have a right to be heard, but we don't need to hear the same thing ten times.
And we don't need.
And so, right?
I think, I think one of the, one of the things that could help with that is not having the same people come back up on this, on the same question. And another thing that might help with that would be a time limit. A time limit for.
Have the moderator set it in advance and have the voters vote on it.
Have the time, moderator set a time limit on, on people at the mic.
I wonder if those are some things we could write up.
Tell me not to talk so much.
Shut David down.
Yeah.
Right.
And most, I know most Robert's orders, they have it so that on a certain subject, if you spoke in lunch, you're not allowed to come up and speak until after everyone else who's wanted to speak has had. And I haven't always seen that at town meeting, but that's definitely something.
But then they get up again after everybody else, you know, it just goes on and on, you know?
That's something we talked about when we met, was talking about, like, once we set a date, and, and I know that, talked to the board and everyone think we're very amenable to trying to meet the needs and concerns. We saw with the childcare, that was something that the board heard, that they said this is a concern parents have. So I think if we can establish like a date and everything, that we can work and spend this time to figure out what we can do to help.
And assuming that Bridgette is willing to, to do the daycare again, which we haven't asked her, we can certainly get her permission to advertise her name in the daycare. Maybe when people hear that it's a licensed daycare, that may change some things. So that's a valid point.
Yeah, definitely.
You're talking a Saturday morning?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Well, my thing is, I don't know how many people, especially maybe younger ones, understand we have a town meeting form of government. So it's we the people here and act. In a lot of places, they have that town manager that sits. So we all, you know, I don't know how we could advertise that this is such an impo, see, to me, it's so important. And I think it's so important to have the school and the town because it's really just that one bill you get for both things. So.
Mary, the problem is, I, I, I'm probably wrong. I don't think I am. You look at your tax rate, look at your taxes, okay? The taxes are relatively cheap, okay? Think, depends who you are, I guess, okay? It's not twenty-two dollars a thousand like Sanford, okay? You know, people, I think a lot of people are pretty content with their tax bill and the way that things happen. If they're not, they're usually up here complaining, which, you know, we don't get a lot of people up here, not like we used to.
I don't know. I, I hear a lot of rumbling about.
Well, yeah.
The taxes and, who knows, we may find, yeah, yeah, look where I live. We may find there's a number of people that come to this meeting because they weren't happy about the revamp. They weren't happy with the new tax bill. Taxes for some people went up substantially. So we may find we have more people here. I think people get their tax bill after they vote for this. And personally, I think when we're, when we package this, I would propose that we give them an estimate of what the tax rate's going to be. I think people should know that so that when they approve these budgets, if they all get approved, tax rate's gone from six forty-five to whatever. And I, I just think that the more transparency we can have and get that information out in advance, maybe we do a mailing with some of this information to the community. It may cost us something, but it might be worthwhile and get the information out. And if, if, at least they have it. If they choose to come or not, that's really on them. But we've done what we can to make sure they're informed and make it convenient for them to come in.
And the school puts out a really good budget booklet that outlines everything in that and also shows the, the pie that we looked at last night. Is it eighty?
Roughly, you're in about like eighty-eight percent contracted services.
Yeah.
You're really talking about twelve percent.
So that only really leaves us with like twelve percent because.
That's not committed.
Right.
It's not committed.
I understand. Same with the town. There's very little to play with unless you start eliminating contracts.
But I think where I was going was, I think people all get content, everything's good until something where the tax bill goes up.
That's what brings it up.
Where you're not going to drag more people out until there's some issue.
Yeah.
That drags them out. And I, I believe that the services, everybody's getting the school, everybody else, nobody's going to come running out with their hair on fire because there's nothing, no fire. And so I, but we're, we're just, you know, we're just trying to get more participation and we'll see what happens.
I think, I mean, I love your idea of doing some sort of advertisement. I mean, we have the newsletter. I don't think that, that would be too hard to add something in there. If we do a mailer, that's, I do think there's a lot of people, like Mary said, they're coming from a town where government, they don't have this style. They may not understand. We saw a lot of people moving in during COVID. I don't think it would hurt. I mean, I think you may get a few extra people, but you get a few extra people from that, get a few extra people from the transparency, then you're going to start seeing some increase in numbers.
And you know, and like what, what we were talking with Judy and Tom were talking about, you know, the people get up over and over and over. There are a lot of people that don't go to town meeting because of the same people talk and talk and it just feels like a waste of time sitting there. And so, you know, maybe by restructuring a little bit, maybe put some times, this and that, maybe people won't be so.
David, I won't talk as much.
Well, I thought that was the problem.
I'll ask Jennifer this. Do you think we could have something in advance that would kind of lay out the ground rules that we could share with the moderator, make sure that the prospective moderators, so that that's, that's clearly stated, everyone understands what they are. It's not the moderator picking on someone because they don't like them. These are the express wishes.
I don't think we can do that in advance. I think that's something we got to do on the floor.
Well, we can at least come together about what we think that ought to be.
Well, you can talk with the moderator ahead of time.
That's, that's all. Try to get a sense of how to, how to contain this. Let people speak, but not let, you know, we don't want filibusters.
I mean, your moderator's elected, so, you know, there, we have had the same moderator be elected. I mean, there's nothing to say that you can't have a conversation, you know, about some of these concerns prior to and, but once he's, once he or she is elected, then, you know.
No, I understand, but, but.
And the thing is that once they make the rule, if they're going to make it at the town meeting, the moderator does, there's probably going to be fifty people stand up and argue why it shouldn't be, you know, limited speak.
And that's part of the issue.
So you got to stop it before that.
I think if you explain, because I feel like we're all on the same page that we hear people saying these meetings are too long, whether it's because the same people talking or, you know, just going back up to the mic. I think if we, if we have time, which we do, if we explain to them what the purpose or the intent of these rules are, saying, you folks keep saying these meetings are too long. If we do rules like this, if you vote for these rules, the hope is it will shorten these meetings. And I think if people come into town meeting and we have pushed and advertised and said, this is hoping to lead to shorter meetings, which you've been asking for.
Yeah.
There, I think they're going to say, okay, well, they tell us this is going to be a shorter meeting, so if these are the rules that are going to make sure that town meeting is efficient, let's give it a try. And I think that leads to the edu, the education and the advertisement of the purpose of, of having those specific guidelines.
You know, we've had public hearings where we've had a number of people here. And I think it was you, David, had said, is there anyone who has a point of view that hasn't been expressed?
That's always.
Because all you needed expressed is once, in my view.
Yeah.
And that it's, if I get five people up saying the same thing.
Yeah.
That isn't going to convince me any more than one person getting up and saying something is smart. And so, I, I, I think, I think a rule or a practice like that would be appropriate. You let people know in advance and maybe they'll self-select out of these, the need to get up to the podium and, and repeat the last three people. Right.
Yeah, it should be. It should be if you only go up if you, if it's something you're new to, not something to build upon. And that's all Robert's orders. Typically, it works out by yes and no. You go in with a sign and then if you have something that has been brought up.
So I think a review of the Roberts rule is helpful in whatever direction. We can talk more about that.
So, so where do we stand now?
Well, listen, I was going to ask. We don't use Roberts rules.
Yes, we do.
The moderator.
The moderator, I thought it was the town moderator's rules and they make the kind of rules as they go.
The town moderator in the past has, has.
He's gone by Roberts rules.
I, I heard something different at the last, and I wasn't quite sure. He didn't quite cite Roberts rules.
That's right.
You heard it too.
It has in the past, though.
No, no, he always called it.
Main moderator's manual.
Main moderator's book.
There you go.
Moderator's manual.
Main moderator's manual, which is probably almost identical to Roberts rule.
Okay.
There's some, there's some.
Very close.
Well, I mean, if the main moderator's is put out by main municipal, I mean, that's to help, it's for this purpose.
I know, but there's a lot of leeway in there with the other rules rather than Roberts.
But we'll, we'll let us work on that piece.
Feel like leeway.
You know, I understand there are some towns that do a great job with this. Now, now maybe there's just a different culture in the town. I don't know. But I've heard, for instance, Shapley, it runs a great meeting.
Absolutely.
And it's, you know, it, you know, people say what they got to say. It moves right along. It's not particularly long. Is that right?
No.
And so maybe we ought to, Jennifer, you probably know because you go to that meeting, but there might be towns that have sort of figured out how to do this in a way that, you know, let's, let's steal from them.
The school's not included in that, right?
No, because they're RS two fifty-seven.
They're RS V fifty-seven.
But even their town one doesn't go half as long as Acton.
Right.
With just as many articles.
Right.
The moderator runs a much different, tighter ship. They bring in an outside attorney that isn't tied to the town in any way, doesn't have a connection and just runs a very tight ship.
That's a good idea.
Have you considered that?
Yeah. So the moderator is elected by the voters, so not really a conversation to have here.
Yeah.
Again, something that.
But it's an option that I never heard of.
The pace and the flow of the meeting is dependent on the moderator. So when you elect a moderator, just make sure you're conscious of the person that you're.
Have the moderator run the meeting right.
That's what you advertise so people know when they make that vote at the beginning of the meeting.
Problem is, you don't have the other moderator there to vote in.
Well, maybe we do.
Anybody that's.
Can be invited.
Anybody that knows the rules, I suppose, could stand up and say, I would like to be elected. No?
When is school vacation?
The third week. I gave you some dates.
Is it fifteenth or the twenty-second?
Starts the fifteenth.
You want to stay, yeah, you want to stay away from the Saturdays before and after. I gave those dates.
And what the, another thing, I don't know if the full board and full school committee knows this, but another step this luck board take to be proactive, and you, you know, meeting us in the middle on this, is that we will cancel all activities that day. You know, all rec games will be canceled, the transfer station will be closed. We will do everything we can to, you know, sometimes it goes over well, sometimes it doesn't. I mean, I would go as far as you've got a Lions Club breakfast scheduled on the sixth and it goes from eight to ten. So in an effort to encourage people.
So putting aside those two weekends, what are the other weekends that are?
The sixth or the twenty-seventh.
Right.
Okay.
It'll work better for you guys. Do you need more time?
Well, we're, we're cranking on a budget.
Yeah.
And this will, we, we would have to have our budget done middle of March?
We'll have it done before then, yeah.
I know we will. I just said, but that's my only.
March first.
We've never done that, so we need to, we need to move in that direction, but the sixth or the twenty-seventh?
So when do you return? I'm sorry, you return to school on the twenty-second?
Yes.
I think when we met, we'd originally talked about the sixth as a potential date.
We talked, we talked.
You're ready for either one of those, from what I understand.
Right.
Those are the days, because those two Saturdays that are within the school, people are gone.
Can we aim for the sixth? Can we aim for the sixth?
We could do the sixth.
That would be better for us.
Could we set it as a tentative date?
Sure.
And let's, I just want to see that calendar.
We're all nervous.
I just want, I want to make sure we get.
You can do it. You just have to have like two meetings a week, you see? Can't always just stick to one.
It gets you a daily work backdrop.
It's not, no, we, yeah.
You need to know what you're working from.
I mean, because you have to meet with all the departments.
I want to get this done as quickly as possible.
We've got a different plan this year, though. We got this.
The sixth is fine. I just, let's tentatively set it and we'll confirm that in the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Well, why can't we do it as a trial run?
Trial run?
Combined.
I'm interested to take the last two years and just compare the voters to see if they're the same. I mean, it's public information, you know, to see if the hundred and thirty-nine that attended the town versus the hundred and twenty-four of the town, if they're the same or if we're going to, you know, I'm interested to see.
We had a hundred and thirty-nine people at our town meeting.
No, at the school, no, a hundred and thirty-nine, you had a hundred and four.
Hundred and four, okay.
One thirty-nine to the school, one hundred and four.
Before that, you had ninety-four. At the polls, we had a hundred and twenty-two at town meeting.
At the polls, okay.
But it's still budget. It's comparing budget. So I'm interested to see if those are actually the same hundred people.
There'll be some crossover.
Yeah, or if they're.
There'll also be some that don't, because I know the parent, I know who the parents are that generally say they're coming up to vote or not or coming to a meeting or not. And then one more in the room, I know who the parents are. Yeah.
Okay.
As far as getting information out, um, we're able to get out all of our information via blackboard, which goes to, you know, every parent. And then there's often blended families. So if you're looking at three hundred kids, you're looking at six hundred just parents, right, two parents, six hundred. But then you've got the stepfather and the others that are in the community. So we're probably getting out to roughly about five hundred people when we ask them to, for information. Schools closed, about five hundred people get that information.
So.
So we send out our information. I can get it to about five hundred people for you if you want to combine anything.
Um, I think we should consider that. And then we should also look at a mailing with, or some other way of getting it out. Maybe we do both.
Okay.
But if we can get the town information combined with the school and get it out to those, the more ways we can get it out to people, the better. So if you're open to it.
You mail all the warrant articles out? You mail them all out?
We did, uh, did we do it last year?
I don't know.
All of the warrant articles is, I mean, not gonna be a regular envelope or a mailing.
Well, we, we did, we did one year, COVID year, we, we did it.
We mailed out, right.
We mailed out.
Want to do a website where it's all there?
Yeah, absolutely.
That's generally what we do.
Yeah.
Point them in a direction versus.
So they can go on the web and look at all the warrants articles.
You know, I know you guys, even though you don't have to, you have a budget hearing prior to, the board can have, you know, there, once we get our budget turned over and Warren and Finance are looking at it, we're happy to have some, you know, put it as an agenda item, just for a few weeks in a row. You know, we're not, while Warren and Finance is reviewing, let the public come and ask any questions if your warrant is done, you know?
Are those independent or together? Like when we do our budget review, we do it ourselves and you'll do yours and then we'll do our town meeting.
I think so. I think so.
So we'll set the date for that. Last night we started our budget process and I left, I need to now fill this in when we agree we're doing it. I left the selectman's signature date and the town meeting date as a T B A because we haven't had this meeting yet. But everything else we have is all lined up and basically we're done by about beginning to mid-March. So there'll be at least three to four weeks before we vote, depending on what Saturday we pick.
I'd like to hear Amanda's point of view.
I'm, I'm fine with this, the Saturday morning, as long as the school goes first.
I mean, really, nothing's really changing other than we moved the date up.
I'm fine with that.
Can we start earlier? Can you start at eight in the morning? No.
You're bringing the coffee.
It's in Mrs. Early Bird. I can't help it, I'm ready, you know?
Jeanette would start at five if you'd like.
That's right, that's right.
I just don't know about parents with kids getting them out the door without, but they go to school, so they must be.
That's right.
So.
Eight o'clock?
Yeah, on a Saturday, a nine, a nine meeting is enough.
Nine is probably a little more. Nine, I guess, is a reasonable time, but you know, they're either gonna come or they're not gonna come. That's, that's the issue.
I'll do my stretches and stuff before they meet, you know, so.
If we can get through the money issues before noon, I think we can all claim success. So if we can get through those, the school and then the town's money meetings, and if the other items come after, after lunch, that's fine with me.
Do you already know like the zoning issues?
No.
No, we haven't. They're, they're working on, they got five of them, I think they're working on possibly.
Yeah, three to five. They're looking at already consolidating, um, so it's an ongoing agenda item. We gave them a deadline already of, uh, February second, so. And we're hoping that the board signs the warrant on March fifteenth, if possible.
And you're gonna look.
As long as we see, and I built in some placeholder dates for weather, so.
Okay.
Sounds like they're lining up good.
I don't think it's a real problem.
So with the zoning, will those things come after the money articles?
Yes.
That's what I would suggest.
Usually they're the first things, other than.
Yeah, I'm kind of flipping around.
Selecting positions and stuff, but, um, honestly, I think myself, I would, I would put the zone at the end anyways.
What about all the election of these open positions?
Yeah.
I mean, you wouldn't do that, you'd do that first?
You gotta do that first. You gotta do that while you got the most people there.
Yeah.
Um, but the reason why I've, why I'm saying the ordinances should be put towards the end, might actually keep people there a little longer too.
Right.
Okay, um, because.
Some people care about.
Because, you know, the zoning's a really big deal. I'm not saying the money's not, but zoning's kind of a big deal and.
Getting bigger.
You know, hopefully people will stay longer just to get to those zoning articles. And, um, so if we can get you guys through, we'll get our people elected, our committees and all that, and then go through your budget, do our money stuff and then start doing zoning and all the little knickknacks afterwards, social securities and all that, um, yeah.
We're still gonna have elections in June.
Yes.
Yeah, we start to have the elections in June.
So would you have, the school, the school budget would go, we would do our thing, and then we would move to the town?
The election of office, what I heard them say is the election of officers, Warren and Finance, anything open that has to be elected, we do those. Then we'll do the school money.
Before the.
Town money, then the zoning and all the house.
We don't want to, we want as many people as there as we can. We usually, that's the first thing we do, and that doesn't usually take long.
That won't take long.
No.
Um, get that done and then, then we move on to the big stuff. So, well, we'll give it a try.
Try it, that's all we can do.
Thanks for working with us.
Much appreciated, so, um.
You're adjourned or are you going into a meeting?
Nope, we don't have a meeting until, uh.
You still on, CJ?
Can you, um?
We're over an hour before.
Are we good?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yep. Is there anything else you want to add, CJ? We're winding down.
Again, if, if we could, um, you know, have a childcare that would help anyway to get parents in if we're getting, if we want, because I don't think we really have an issue getting a lot of slightly older people. And I think the, the problem is that we don't have a lot of people with young children who come. And they are a lot, there are a decent number of them in town.
Right.
Um, so having childcare would absolutely help anyway. It won't get everybody out, but it will be a, you know, hopefully it will be a draw.
I believe we played on.
We will work on that.
Was there anything about the last childcare, uh, offering that ought to be changed or was it, uh, the last town meeting we had childcare?